For 70 years, we have flown at 70,000 feet. Beal Air Force Base invites you to the Beal Air and Space Expo, celebrating a legacy of reconnaissance. Witness an astonishing lineup of aerial performances on June 7th and 8th. Free tickets are available at bealairshow.com.
Yuba Sutter dot live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com. Yuba Sutter dot live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Supervisors, join me in the front, please. We have multiple presentations to make, so bear with us, everybody.
Well, Isabella Morgan with Assemblyman Gallagher's office and David Morgan with Congressman Lamaltha's office, please join the board up front. Will Donna Johnston and Sutter County Elections, please join the board up front for a presentation of a National Clearinghouse Award for Excellence in Election Administration for the implementation of Sutter Translates with the use of HAVA grant funds.
Okay, great. Then we will start actually with Isabella and David if you would come on up and do a presentation.
Hello, everyone. So my name is Isabella Morgan. I'm with Assemblyman Gallagher's office, and we heard the good news, and we wanted to make sure that you were recognized for that incredible achievement, I would say. But I want to read you what we have on the certificate and that what I will be presenting to them, but it says, "In recognition and commendation to Sutter County Elections for receiving a national recognition from the U.S. Election Assistance Commission, honoring your excellence in election administration. Congratulations on this outstanding achievement." Thank you. Congratulations.
Switch. Thank you. So David with Congressman Lamaltha's office, it's my honor to be here today to present you with the certificate recognizing your national achievement through the Sutter Translate program. Our Elections Office down here does a great job every year, and this year you guys went above and beyond. So we're happy to see that you guys received that recognition, and it's an honor to present this to you for your work. So congratulations and thank you.
And just one more final word. And I want to thank Congressman Lamaltha and Gallagher for coming, or not Congressman Gallagher, but Assemblyman Gallagher. We appreciate you guys being here today. And then on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, Donna Johnson and team, we are going to present you with this award or certificate of recognition as well for the Clearinghouse Award. I don't think people realize what a big deal it is of the award that you received. So maybe you can tell us a little bit more about it, because we're very proud of you and of Sutter County for receiving this award.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Board. Thank you Congressman's office and the Assemblyman's office for this, for the recognition for this award. So this award is to the Election Assistance Commission. They do them annually for any outstanding achievement. We received an outstanding achievement for a smaller jurisdiction, and that is for our Sutter Translate program. And it's one of only 53 awards across the nation. We were recognized for our little pocket talk devices, which allows anybody to talk to us in another language, and it will repeat that language back to them verbally and also written as well. And so it enables us to help all of our poll workers with poll workers assistance and then any language assistance to anybody who comes in to vote on Election Day, as well as in our offices. And we've actually used them or using them now in just our regular office every single day. So if anybody does come in and has a language barrier, we're able to help them as well. And so that's, that's why we received that achievement, and we're very proud to receive this such a national award.
That's awesome. Let's give her a round of applause. And then paparazzi, one more photo.
Will Marvin King Jr., please join the board up front for a presentation of a gold resolution in honor of your retirement from Sutter County?
Okay, welcome Marvin. By County Veteran Services Officer. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors proudly presents this gold resolution to Marvin King Jr. in recognition of his 23 years of outstanding service to the citizens of Sutter and Yuba Counties. Marvin King Jr. began his distinguished career with the Yuba-Sutter Veterans Office in 2002 as a Veterans Service Representative. Through hard work and dedication, was promoted to Veteran Service Officer for, or Officer in 2004. The Veteran Services Office provides critical support to honorably discharge veterans and their dependents across both counties, offering assistance with disability benefits, healthcare services, benefit claims, case management, client advocacy's, and referrals for counseling and rehabilitation. Wow, Marvin, that's a lot. Marvin was born in Quantico, Virginia, while his father was stationed there as a proud member of the United States Marine Corps and was raised in Michigan. Marvin himself honorably served in the United States Air Force for over 21 years, from February 1981 until his retirement in October 2002. In 1993, Marvin and his family relocated to Yuba County following his reassignment from England to Beal Air Force Base, where they became valued members of the community. Marvin has been devoted, a devoted husband to his wife Sheri since July 1983, and together they raised their child, born in February 1993. Upon retirement, Marvin and Sheri plan to embark on new adventures, including learning to play the guitar. Do you play at all now? Or, oh, that's awesome. Traveling, sounds like fun, and re-establishing their travel agency business. Oh, we need to talk to you soon. Beginning an exciting new chapter in their lives, Marvin King Jr.'s unwavering dedication, professionalism, and compassion have made a lasting and meaningful impact to the Yuba-Sutter community. His presence and leadership will be deeply missed by colleagues, veterans, and countless individuals he has served. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors offers congratulations and sincere appreciation to Marvin King Jr. on the occasion of his retirement on May 13th, 2025, and causes the names of each of the members to be affixed to the gold resolution as evidence of the Board's individual and collective appreciation for his years of service to Sutter County, and wishes him great success in his future endeavors. Congratulations, Marvin.
I usually don't speak very much, but... First of all, I want to thank the Board here for all their support over the years. My office could not have operated without your support, and I greatly appreciate that. The Yuba-Sutter Veteran Service Office was established in July 1945. It has been in functioning, functioning independently for the past 80 years. It's been my honor to serve at the Veteran Service Office with the, an incredible team for the last 23 years. During that time, the Veteran Service Office, I had the unique pleasure of talking with our local veterans about their military service, their struggles that they endured. I've talked, I've had the opportunity to talk to Pearl Harbor survivor, Bataan Death March survivors, POWs from all the wars, Korean-Chosen Reservoir survivors, and their dependents. This has been an incredible opportunity that I've had. I don't know of any other job or any other position that I could, could have gotten into that I had the opportunity to interact with so many heroes in our local area. They're the ones that kept me coming in and kept me doing what I, what I've done. So as I get ready to retire, I want to thank you for your support and for the support of our, our local veterans and our heroes in our community.
And then, yeah, stay up here, because we have two more presentations. And so I'm going to first call up Isabella Morgan from Gallagher's office.
You thought you were going to get away that easy. We also have a recognition for you, and this one says, "Thank you. With commendation and congratulations, we recognize your distinguished years of service to the veterans of the Yuba-Sutter community and Northern California as a Veteran Service Officer. Your unwavering dedication and commitment to our community have made a meaningful and lasting impact. Thank you for your contributions, and we wish you continued success, even with the guitar playing, in all of your future endeavors." Yeah, congratulations.
That was from Assemblyman Gallagher, and now we'll call up David Morgan.
Thank you. So it's my honor to be here today. It has been a long time coming. You've gone above and beyond for our veteran community, for not just Yuba and Sutter Counties. A lot of people don't know this, but he's helped the veterans all throughout the North State, Colusa County, Butte County, Glen County, everywhere. And so it's, it's my honor. I know you were trying to dodge all the recognitions, but it is my honor to be here today to recognize you, you know. You're somebody who has gone above and beyond. We've got a coworker in our office who does a lot of the stand-down stuff, Carrie, and she talks about how you are usually the last one at those meetings, because you're hearing every story, you're talking to every veteran about what their issues are. And so we can't say thank you enough, really, for all your years of service and sacrifice and the things that you've done. So thank you, Marvin. We really do appreciate it.
That's from Congressman Lamaltha. You're not getting away without a photo, Marvin. Thank you, Marvin. Congratulations.
Well, Becky Mendoza, please join the board up front for a presentation of a service award in honor of 10 years of service with Sutter County.
Becky Mendoza, 10 years goes by fast, doesn't it? Okay. Becky Mendanza, Mendanza, sorry. Started with the Agricultural Commissioner's Office in June of 2015, working in the pesticide use enforcement program. She was Employee of the Year just two years later in 2017 for her excellent work in the pesticide program. She quickly passed all eight ag biologist weights and measures licenses, and shortly after she passed her Deputy Ag Commissioner and Deputy Sealer of Weights and Measures Licenses. She was promoted to Deputy Ag Commissioner-Sealer in early 2020, where she now manages pest exclusion. I gotta get this right. Oh, thank you. Phytosanitary export certification, phytosanitary field walking, nursery, apiary, crop statistics, and industrial hemp programs. Becky is a strong leader, effective manager, with high standards, and exceptional professionalism. We are lucky to have her as a member of the management team. Congratulations, Becky, on 10 years of faithful service to the agricultural community of Sutter County. Congratulations. Lisa, where's Lisa? Come on down for the photo. Join us. And Nick. There he is. I didn't see him there. Thanks. Did you mind saying a few words, Lisa?
Hi, Lisa Herbert, Sutter County Ag Commissioner, and this is Nick Oliver, Assistant Ag Commissioner. And Becky is an exceptional employee. Sutter County is lucky to have her, and we're really proud that she's part of our management team. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Did you want to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you so much for the recognition. 10 years flies by, and I guess I'm just getting started. I want to thank my management team for being so great. I come to work every day because I love the people I work with and the people I work for, so keeps me coming back. Appreciate it.
Round of applause. Thank you. Oh, we have a mug for you as well, sorry.
Will Rick Bingham, please join the board up front for a presentation of a service award in honor of 25 years of service with Sutter County?
25 years? No way. How old are you, 26? Okay. What the heck? Jeez. What's the secret?
Working for Sutter County.
Oh, working for Sutter County. Oh, great, yeah. 25-year service award. We don't, haven't given a lot of these away, so this is awesome. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors presents this 25-year service award plaque to Rick Bingham as an expression of our sincere appreciation for 25 years of loyal and faithful service to the citizens of the county of Sutter. May the coming years continue to bring you a full measure of those endowments which long service and dedication to duty so richly deserve. Okay, so now I'd like to ask if Sarah, you'd say a few words?
Absolutely. So I'm Sarah Everhart Rios, your Health and Human Services Director, and Rick is an amazing leader in our shop. I could never do anything that we do in HHS without Rick. So Rick started in Sutter, Yuba Behavioral Health, and has had many roles. And so he's, of course, started the psychiatric health facility. That's we, everybody gets to come in through there, right? So you can also work as well. So then he's done some work. We're in a rehab model approach, right? But, so Rick also has done a lot of work with the forensic population, Department of State hospitals, quality management. He's the mental health plan director and the substance use disorder treatment director for not one but two counties. So very thankful for Supervisor Messick to also be here as well on behalf of Yuba County. He works tirelessly, I think, to understand the needs of both counties. He also speaks Espanol, and he rides street bikes. And so, Steve.
No, thank you. I just wanted to be here to support Rick. I mean, he's been great to work with, and anyone who spends 25 years at the county dealing with people like me, you know, deserves some recognition. So, no, but he's been just a solid team member, and he's always so calm and thoughtful during very stressful times, and just, yeah, a strong leader for HHS. So thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
I've had the pleasure, I've had the honor actually to serve with Rick for, what, five out of the last six years on behavioral health. I'm telling you, this group, Rick, Sarah, they, they care deeply about this community and the behavioral health, well-being of this community, and it shows in the passion in what they do. And I, I hope we have you for a lot longer, because we're in great hands with these two especially. So we got a great group here, and it shows when you watch Rick do his thing. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. You know, my wife and I are originally from Southern California. We came here actually from the East Coast 25 years ago to take this job. And we had a two-year-old at the time, and we had two more here at Fremont Rideout. And so it's been a really great community to be in and to raise a family in, so we're really grateful. Also really grateful for the opportunities that I've had with Sutter County, working here for, for the 25 years that I've been here. And I have to say, I'm really, you know, I stand on the shoulder of giants, right? With a lot of the people that I've worked with in the past who've really mentored me and taught me so much. So I appreciate all those folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Let's give him a round of applause.
Will By County Ambulance, please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 18th through the 24th, 2025 as National Emergency Medical Services Week?
All right. Got a great team up here. National Emergency Medical Services Week, May 18th to the 24th, 2025. National Emergency Medical Services Week is an annual event that honors the dedication and sacrifices of EMS providers while raising awareness about the vital role they play in our society. EMS professionals, including emergency medical technicians and paramedics, dedicate their careers to providing rapid, competent, and compassionate care to those facing medical crises, often risking their own safety to ensure the well-being of others. By County Ambulance and its emergency medical services professionals play a crucial role in our community by providing life-saving care and assistance to individuals in need during medical emergencies. The theme of National Emergency Medical Services Week is "We Care for Everyone." Recognizing the dedication of EMS professionals who provide critical care on the front lines, during National Emergency Medical Services Week, communities across the nation recognize the contributions of EMS personnel and express gratitude for their unwavering commitment to public health and safety. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize the week of May 18th to the 24th, 2025 as National Emergency Medical Services Week in Sutter County, and we urge all residents to join us in recognizing and honoring the vital contributions of By County Ambulance EMS personnel. Give them a round of applause, and then I'll...
I'd like to say thank you to the Board and to the County for recognizing. It's not just By County Ambulance, it's also our Sutter County and Yuba City Fire Department personnel. So all next week, each day has a day of this theme where it'll either be a Health and Wellness Day, a Safety Day, EMS for Children's Day. Stop the Bleed's a big one for Thursday, which we do a lot of outreach with that, and so does our local fire department. And we're just really grateful for the recognition and from the county and their support. Thank you.
All right. If you guys realize how fortunate we were to have an EMS of this, your company in general in this area is unbelievable. And it's not just from what you guys do, saving lives, but it's the other stuff you put in throughout the community. I don't think I've ever been to a community event without someone from By County Ambulance actually being there and, and helping.
You guys are always there. That's huge. That's a big benefit. So especially when you roll into emergency, you almost know where you're going because you're there in the community helping out. Thank you, guys, and thank you for your family. And, I mean, your dad built an amazing company, and you're carrying it on with all your employees. Great job, guys.
Will Neil Hay and Ken Straw please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 18th through the 24th, 2025 as National Public Works Week?
Have the whole crew up. Everybody come up. Nobody can hide. You can run, but you can't hide. Yeah, that's right. These are the workers out here. All right, you guys have your speeches ready? I'll just check it, okay? Ah, come on. All right. National Public Works Week, May 18th through the 24th, 2025. People, Purpose, and Presence. Public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the county of Sutter. This infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors hereby designate the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025 as National Public Works Week in the county of Sutter, and calls upon all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Let's give them a round of applause for the great work they do.
Well, I'd say on behalf of Development Services, we greatly appreciate the board's recognition of this proclamation. We have some of our engineering staff here, we've got office staff back across the street, and then we've got our road crew that's out around the county looking after the bridges and the roadways. And it's certainly a challenging job with a lot of variety that I think our crew and our staff look forward to every day, and we appreciate this recognition. We appreciate the cooperative, you know, partnership among all the county departments. I think between General Services and ourselves, we work together to try to, you know, provide facilities, provide infrastructure, and we do it in a team atmosphere, and we, you know, we feel the support from both the county administrator's office and your board. And I'll let Ken say some words.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you to the board for the honor and recognizing our amazing public works staff. Like Neil mentioned, it's really a team effort, and it's because of our staff and their hard work and dedication to the county that we're able to keep roads, bridges, buildings, and other facilities safe. So really, they can't be thanked enough. It's a tough job, so thank you.
Awesome. Round of applause for this amazing team.
Will Brittany Lathrup with the Agency on Aging Area Four, please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 2025 as Older Americans Month?
Okay, Older Americans Month, May 2025. May is Older Americans Month, a time for us to recognize and honor Sutter County's older adults and their immense influence on every facet of American society. Nearly 24,000 Sutter County residents are now 60 years of age or older, representing 24% of the total population. The 2025 theme for Older Americans Month flipped the script on aging. I like that. Focuses on the transforming how society perceives, talks about, and approaches aging. Communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. Sutter County must ensure that older Americans have the resources and support needed to stay involved in their communities, reflecting our commitment to the inclusivity and connectedness. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as essential and valuable members of our community. Awesome. So I'll give you the mic for a few.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for presenting and acknowledging Older Americans Act Month. I am Brittany Lathrup. I, I work with the Meals on Wheels program for Yuba and Sutter Counties. It's one of many amazing programs that Agency on Aging Area Four offers in the community. With this program and all of our programs, our ultimate goal is to keep our older adults independent and living and striving. And so through our, I'm going to talk about my program a little bit. Through Meals on Wheels, Yuba and Sutter, Sutter County alone, this year to date, we've served 308 unduplicated older adults and meals to their homes directly. That's about 16,000 meals that have gone out to individual homes this year. So I just want to say thank you again, and if anybody is ever interested in helping us serve our older adult community, we are always looking for volunteers through our Meals on Wheels program, and thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you.
Will Shafay Shaheed with Yuba College Foster Kinship Care, please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 2025 as National Foster Care Month?
All right, great. Welcome, National Foster Care Month, May 2025. Sutter County relies on foster homes due to the number of traumatized children found to be at risk and being removed from their own homes because of sexual abuse, physical abuse, parental absence, or incapacity, or exploitation. Sutter County recognizes that all children need love, support, security, and a safe place to call home. Sutter County has 114 children in in, out-of-home care, including foster homes and short-term residential therapeutic programs. Sutter County has children placed with foster parents in the counties of Sutter, Butte, Contra Costa, Fresno, Sacramento, Placer, Merced, Tahima, and Yuba, who have opened their hearts and their homes to the children of Sutter County in times of crisis, providing a safe, loving, and supportive home environment due to their commitment to the needs of the children. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as National Foster Care Month. And I'll now give you the mic.
I just want to say thank you to Sutter County and Yuba County for providing us with the funding to help the families out there.
Thank you.
Will Michelle Blake and the Children's and Family Commission, please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 2025 as Maternal Mental Health Awareness Month?
Okay, Maternal Mental Health Awareness Month. Over 1,231 babies are born in the county of Sutter each year in maternal health, and the maternal health, and more specifically, the mental health of women before, during, and after pregnancy is an issue of great concern to women and their families, and is therefore of interest to the county of Sutter. Between 10 and 20% of new and expectant mothers are affected by perinatal depression and related mood disorders such as anxiety and psychosis, and they may experience associated symptoms which are often overlooked and heavily stigmatized because new and expectant mothers suffering from, suffering from a perinatal mood disorder often feel confused, ashamed, and isolated. Many at-risk women may not seek help because they are not informed about perinatal depression and related mood disorders as part of their health care, because there's a lack of knowledge and use of screening and assessment tools, and because they are unaware of the treatment and community supportive services for perinatal depression and related mood disorders. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Maternal Mental Health Awareness Month in the county of Sutter, and calls upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, and businesses to facilitate increased awareness and education about perinatal depression and related mood disorders throughout the county of Sutter, to explore and encourage the use of perinatal screening tools, and to improve the availability and access of effective treatment, prevention, and supportive services for the promotion of maternal and infant mental health in the county of Sutter. Mouthful. But thank you. I'm going to pass you on the mic.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, and members of our AG amazing board. Thank you for recognizing Maternal Mental Health Month. One in five women experience some type of perinatal mood and anxiety disorder. So with us today, we have, as you can see, Ms. Sarah is holding our blue dot. That's an international symbol that represents support, hope, and solidarity for mothers experiencing PMAS. So join us today to take a picture with our blue dot to show the moms in Sutter County that they are not alone. And we're also having a baby shower, a community baby shower for all Sutter County families on May 31st. So if you're a new mom, a new family, please join us May 31st at our museum.
Awesome. Round of applause. Thank you for all you do. Appreciate it. Thank you. See ya. Thank you. Good to see you. Take care.
Will Jesse Hallford with Sutter County Health and Human Services, please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month?
All right. And you're back, so I see how you stay young. You just keep walking up and down. Yeah. Hello. Good to see you. Okay, Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2025. Mental health is essential to everyone's health and well-being, and mental health conditions are prevalent in our county, state, and nation, with one in five adults experiencing a mental health issue every year. The number of people experiencing feelings of anxiety and depression has increased, and prevention is an effective way to reduce the experience of mental health conditions. There's a strong body of research that supports tools that all Americans can use to better handle mental health challenges and protect their health and well-being. With effective treatment, individuals with mental health conditions can and do recover, leading to full and productive lives. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Sutter County, and calls upon citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the Sutter County to support mental health providers' commitment to increasing awareness of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to support their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. I'll give you the microphone. Say a few words. Oh. Yeah? No. This way? This way?
Well, I think you said it best, but mental, mental health awareness is very important because mental health, we all have it, and we all need to make sure it's in good condition.
I like that. Excellent. Short and sweet. Let's give them a round of applause for the work they do. Thank you so much. And this concludes our presentations. You know, just when we do a round like this with presentations, to me, it's just amazing to see all the amazing work that we do in Sutter County, and it gives me, it just fills my heart with pride for everything that we do and the work that all of you do. So thank you. Take care, guys. Okay, we are now moving on to public comment. Several members of the public will be allowed to address the board on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. State law provides that no discussion or action may be taken on an item not appearing or posted on the agenda. Madam Clerk?
We have three public comments. The first public speaker is Amit Sharma.
All right, here.
Good afternoon. My name is Amit, Amit Sharma. I'm a lawyer, and I just realized why people don't like him. We were appreciating people and having such a good time, and here I am about to make a comment that's probably not as fun. And I'll keep my comments short and sweet, because I know the board has other items to get to. I'm a local product of local schools and local high schools, and I do practice law locally, particularly under civil calendar. And there's several items that have been going on that I want to bring to the board's attention. I understand that there's no action item today, but I wanted to bring it on your radar, and I would look forward to working with the board to, to work on some of the problems that I'm going to describe, and I have a couple of solutions that the board can perhaps consider in consultation with county council. And the high-level main problem that our area, and particularly in the administration of justice that we're facing, is especially on the civil calendar, there are basically vacancies that haven't been filled by the governor, and no election's been held, and there's a, what is supposed to be a rotating series of temporary, of retired judges, for lack of better words, we're using judges from temp agencies that are coming in, and there is no accountability, and there's several issues that come up because of that. Now, obviously, getting these vacancies filled are, and having these either elected or appointed by the governor is something that we can't take up right now, but the issue those are causing, perhaps we can address some of them. The real result of not having these vacancies filled is that there is no accountability. The judges that are serving right now, and it's probably not a popular thing for an attorney practicing before the court to say, is that to a great extent, the judges are bureaucrats with no accountability, not to the governor because he hasn't appointed them, and not to the people because they haven't elected them. And I'll give you a couple of stark examples that'll highlight the need for the board taking this matter on. Because of the lack of accountability, a lot of decisions are being run through the civil clerk, who I'm sure have good intent but are not judges and are not lawyers. And I've, in my practice, in my humble practice, I've come across two egregious examples. There's countless, but two that come to mind that I do want to bring to your attention to undermine, to underscore and stress the importance. One major issue I've seen witness firsthand is that I brought a motion to disqualify a judge, and the way those motions work is that if a judge contests my disqualification, the judge.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up here, so go ahead, and I'll give you 20 more seconds, okay? Give her 20 seconds.
Well, okay, so I wasn't aware of my time limit, but I will conclude, there's a lot of problems with how courts are being administered. The biggest being a lack of transparency. I've spoken with the county, the court administrator, and one of the tools that, that the court's disposal is to record court proceedings. The judges are refusing to do it. The judges are refusing to do it. I've made my request. I've tried to work with court administration to record these proceedings because sunlight is a great disinfectant. Unfortunately, the judges have shot it down, and what I would request that the Board of Supervisors do is waive one of three options. The first is to adopt a resolution, not mandating, but suggesting strongly that all proceedings inside our courts be recorded unless good cause exists. The other would be to adopt a resolution, and the third would be that the county administers the security within the courts, and instead of recording the proceedings as an official record, to maintain those records as a facility record, subject to Public Records Act requests, so that those matters may be taken up. I'll work with the board, and hopefully, maybe we can get this on an agenda item, so we can take this up in more detail.
Thank you for your comments, and I'll direct staff to follow up with you, and you can go ahead and follow up with our staff, okay?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next speaker is John Messick.
Welcome, Supervisor.
Thank you, Chairman Flores and the board. I actually thank you for honoring me with leading the Hledge of Allegiance. I actually came here today as the commander of the Yuba Sutter Sheriff's Arrow Squadron, not as a supervisor from Yuba County.
Great.
So the Yuba Sutter Sheriff's Arrow Squadron was formed in 1949. We're volunteer pilots. We fly for both the Yuba County and Sutter County Sheriff's Department and code enforcement. And we are having our second annual fundraiser dinner this Saturday night at the Yuba County Airport. I brought a flyer. I'm going to leave it on the table because I have to leave to go to another event. So I just wanted to pitch it on behalf of myself. Darcy McLeod, Vice Commander, Bob Amarrell is our Secretary, Bob Thompson, Treasurer, and we have about around 30 members in our squadron. We're hopefully can get you guys to come to the dinner and support us and/or donate raffle items. Supervisor Ziegemeyer, I understand, made a very generous donation yesterday to our fundraiser. We're going to have a lot of raffle prizes, a lot of guns to raffle off, very few live auction, more silent and raffle because we just want to serve everybody dinner and let them mingle and not have to pay attention to raffle stuff. So that's why I'm here today. I'm going to, it's Saturday night at the Yuba County Airport again. I will leave this flyer on the table out front, so if anybody wants to take a picture of it and purchase tickets and hopefully come to our dinner, or if anybody has any raffle items they'd like to donate to us, businesses or anything, just please get a hold of me. Appreciate it.
Supervisor Messick, what's the name of your-
Oh, it's When Pigs Fly.
Okay, thank you. When Pigs Fly. Well, it sounds like a great event, so hopefully we can participate, and we appreciate your coming out, Supervisor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Tony Farley.
Next. Tony Farley, South U.C. Sounds okay. Yeah, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Marvin, the Air Force, with the law boots on his suit, love the Air Force guy. Thank you, Mike Ziegemeyer, the baddest to the baddest, the funny Ziegemeyer. Sutter Husky versus honkers. Cheerleader, cheerleader honker, cheerleaders, cheerleaders, love the cheerleaders. Dan Flores from Ray'sville, also the heart, started counting, also the heart of Darth Vader's Death Star. Karen Baines, Karen Baines tractor, Karen Baines tractor versus Russian tank versus Karen Baines tractor, Sikh soldier versus Russian soldiers, Ukraine war. Honestly, I want to see Sikhs fight the Russians someday. And Jeff Boone, Jeff Boone, boom, boom, boom guarded. And Professor Steve Smith, Professor Steve Smith, next time, okay, next time. And President Bill, the lawyer. And Zachary Hamble, the Hamble, the serious guy, serious Zachary Hamble, civil fence worker, civil fence worker in the war, typical war. And Colonel Scott Hanson, the catch, the catch a predator. Yeah, and also, also the young cadet, deputy cadet. I like that, man. Leanne Link, Leanne Link, the German lady, and the oldest millennial, oldest millennial, the oldest millennial, Jamie, and Laura, Lotterian, and Sarah, Sarah Rios. Good job, Sarah, the handsome, the handsome guy. And thank you, everybody. Thank you for your service. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Okay, great, thank you. With that, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar groups together those items which are considered non-controversial for which prior policy direction has been given to staff, and they require only routine action by the board. The chair will advise the audience that matters may be adopted in total or by one motion. However, the board may at its option, upon requests of a member of the public, consider any matter separately. With that, I will entertain a motion. Do the chair? Yes. Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, we have first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, and the consent carries. That's items 1 through 25, right, Madam Clerk? Is that correct? Okay, great, thank you. With that, I'm going to adjourn the Board of Supervisors meeting and convene with Waterworks District Number One for the Board of Supervisors. I'm going to let the roll call stand, so we'll call it to order, and we'll start with public comment. Members of the public will be allowed to address the Waterworks District Number One. Board directors on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. State law provides that no action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. And then I will call for a motion for approval of consent.
I make a motion to approve the consent.
Okay, Supervisor Ziegemeyer, and second by Supervisor Baines. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Director Boone?
Aye.
Director Flores?
Aye.
Director Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Director Baines?
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it, and consent calendar carries. There is no other business of the board at this point, and there is no closed session. With that, I'm going to adjourn the Waterworks District Number One. Board of Directors reconvene the Sutter County Board of Supervisors and call it to start with the public hearings.
Public hearing to consider Project U-25-0006, Kalusa Shooting Club Development Agreement between the Sutter County and Kalusa Shooting Club to allow for the conversion of parcels 1 through 4 of Project U-18-056 into permanent wildlife habitat within the AG district. Introduction of an ordinance approving Project U-25-006. Waive the full reading, direct the clerk to read the title only, and adopt the ordinance located generally west of the Sutter buttes along Butte Creek, 0.8 miles west of West Butte Road, and 2.5 miles north of Pass Road.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board. So the matter before you actually just relates to the development agreement that is related to the project that your board previously approved. So it was considered back in September of 2009, and as a part of that project, there was a development agreement to be executed between the county and the property owners. They subsequently were able to sign, execute the agreement, but there was a format issue with the actual agreement, so we had to, under advice of county council and the clerk recorder's office, bring it back before your board for consideration. So your staff report includes the format of the new development agreement that's been reviewed by county council, reviewed by clerk recorder, and, subject to your approval, we'll have it executed. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, bring it back. First of all, open up the public hearing, and I'll ask the clerk, are there any comments?
We have one. Peter Jansen.
Okay. Peter?
Peter Jansen, hi. Thank you to the board. Just wanted to say thank you to Neil and county council for working with me on this. I'm the attorney that represents the project, also here to answer any questions. I think Neil's presentation wrapped it up pretty smoothly. It's just a formatting change, so hopefully pretty easy.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your comments. Any other further comments for public hearing? Okay, then I will close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to the board for any discussion.
No discussion through the chair. We just went through this in public works. Gosh, we brought this up twice just to go through it, and like I said, it goes back to what Neil was mentioning, you know, this just cleaning everything up since 2009, but I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a first by Supervisor Ziegemeyer, a second by Supervisor Baines. I'll, we'll call a roll call vote on this as well, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
An ordinance of the county of Sutter adopting a development agreement by, between the county of Sutter and the Kalusa Shooting Club. Project U-25-0006, APN 08-130-002.
Great. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Neil, for your presentation.
Thank you.
And congratulations. We look forward to seeing that project. Okay, moving on to item number 28.
Public hearing to consider Project U-24-0036, Lucic. Approval of a general plan amendment from AG 80 to industrial, commercial, and rezoned from AG district to commercial-industrial district for the southern 5 acres of a 37.67 acre parcel, and a use permit to reduce the agricultural buffer setback. Adoption of the proposed mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program prepared in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act and guidelines. Adoption of a resolution adopting one amendment to the general plan and approving Project U-24-0036. Introduction of an ordinance amending the Sutter County zoning map. Waive the full reading and direct the clerk to read the title only, and continue the item to May 27th, 2025 for adoption.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Ravina Saroya, Associate Planner with Development Services Department. So this project is a request for a general plan amendment and rezone for 5 plus or minus acres of a 37.67 acre parcel and a use permit to reduce the agricultural buffer setback. Subject parcel is located on the north side of State Highway 20, approximately halfway between the rural community of Sutter and the city of Yuba City. The site is currently zoned AG and designated as AG 80. All the surrounding area is also zoned AG. There are orchards to the northwest and south sides, and single-family residences to the east. So the area in question, as you can see here, the parcel is highlighted in yellow on the screen here, and the area that is proposed to be rezoned is the 5 acres just to the south adjacent to Highway 20. The applicant is proposing to amend those 5 acres to an industrial, commercial, general plan designation, and the zoning to CM or commercial-industrial. And this is a closer view of the area that is proposed to be amended. The existing parcel here is developed with a residence on the northern end of the parcel, almond trees throughout, and 2 7,000 square foot buildings on the south end of the property, used for wholesale nursery and green waste facility. The applicant has indicated that they intend to keep the existing uses on the property, and no development is proposed at this time. The application also includes a request for a use permit to reduce the AG buffer setback. The zoning code requires that a 300-foot AG buffer is maintained from any new or expanded non-AG use to adjacent orchards. A buffer is not required from single-family residences, so there is no buffer requirement on the east side. It was determined that the orchards on-site are more sufficient to provide buffering on the north side of the parcel, and the existing buildings where the operations would occur were approximately 300 feet already from the orchards to the south, so there is no buffer requirement there, or they already met the requirement. The applicant is requesting a waiver, a full waiver for the buffer requirement to the west of the orchards. The 5-acre portion of the site is proposed to be re-designated to commercial-industrial, and it's currently developed with 2 metal buildings and related parking and site improvements, so it's unlikely that it would be converted back to an agricultural use, which is why we are supportive of this project. Initial study was prepared for this project, which includes 7 mitigation measures. A trip generation analysis was submitted in response to a request by Caltrans. The project was brought before the Planning Commission on April 16th, 2025, and the Commission recommended approval of the project by a 5-0 unanimous vote. Several residents of Lidle Road spoke in opposition to the project at the meeting. We received 3 comments from the public in opposition prior to the meeting, and following the Planning Commission meeting, we received 1 letter in support of the projects. All comments were provided in the staff report. Staff is recommending that the board approves this project with the findings listed in the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation, Ravina. I'm going to open up the public hearing, and Madam Clerk, do we have any comment cards?
We have one. Winifred Taylor.
Right here, right in front. Yep.
Hi, I'm Winifred Taylor. I'm here to oppose. First of all, I want to say, please quit taking our farmland and putting in commercial properties on it. Look how you destroyed Sutter. Now you're taking the farmland, I live on Lidle Road, now you're taking the farmland and putting more industrial there. There's a potential for Siller on the other side to take more farmland. This project here, I know I'm talking for no reason because he's already got the building, and you guys are going to give it to him anyway. So, but I just want to say for the people on Lidle Road, we want to keep our homes, our homes. We don't want to be surrounded by businesses. That's why we moved out where we did. That's why we moved into an agriculture land. So I'm asking you guys, please stop taking the farmland. Ziegemeyer, you're living Sutter, you know about how Sutter is growing so fast, and they're taking away all the farmland to put houses. And there's enough, there's enough empty buildings in Yuba City to support these commercial endeavors that we don't need to be destroying more farmland. And we're going to ask, we are asking you to oppose this, but he's already got the building, so I know you're going to let him have it.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Any further comment cards? Okay, there being none, I'm going to close the public session, and then I'm going to bring it back to the board for discussion. Supervisor Ziegemeyer, go ahead.
I want to thank you for coming out today. Yeah, you know, our company turns 80 years old in 2026. We were there before the elementary school was. I mean, my dad donated the ground to the school and the fire department, and then the houses came up, which we change our hours. Okay, so little fact for all of you, 70% of Sutter County is in a FEMA flood zone. So that means, the cool thing about that is, I'm really happy about that, is the fact that 70% of Sutter County will always be agriculture because it's in a FEMA flood zone. So we have one farm, 2 farmers up here. I don't farm myself anymore, but that's great for us and our ag businesses. Houses don't bring in tax revenue like businesses do. Houses bring in people that the sheriff's department has to take care of, and the fire department, and so forth, and infrastructure. Businesses, this one business has the potential to bring in 30, 40, 50, 60, $100,000 of taxable revenue into the county each year. That's huge. And you're right, with this ag ground that we have, but when you go east of Humphrey Road, you're out of a FEMA flood zone, and this is huge. I'm proud of you, Bill, for sticking with this thing and watching this thing go through because we need these businesses in this community. Yuba City, if a business comes into Yuba City, we get a miniscule of tax revenue from that property tax. We need the businesses to come into the county. We do not have a hotel in Sutter County. We have a few restaurants. That's it. Everything is in the city. We need the infrastructure here in the county so we can get those businesses. We had an individual that was going to donate 50 acres of ground in the county to put a hospital in. We worked hard with these hospitals and begging them to come to the county, and they all said, nope, you don't have the infrastructure, you're not ready. I drove to Vegas the other, last month for volleyball, looking over, and you look at the new Autozone, which Supervisor Flores and Supervisor Baines were instrumental in getting us number 1 on the list, only for them to turn us down because we didn't have the infrastructure in. So number 1 on our list, of course, is infrastructure. We work on that. I was just at the water, Sutter Community Water District meeting last week for, because they handle the water in Sutter. But I truly believe personally this is a good thing for these businesses to come in, and I'd love to see more. The reason my family sold the company out there, our property on the highway, because we were on the west side of Humphrey Road in a FEMA flood zone. This is out of a FEMA flood zone. So if we strategically do this well, and we get these retail locations along the highway right there, it benefits everyone in this community, not just with jobs, but more monies to pay these departments, especially with fire and sheriff. But thank you, guys, for bringing this project on.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Supervisor Ziegemeyer, any other comments from the board? Supervisor Ziegemeyer, any other comments from the board, and then I would entertain a motion?
We should approve.
Second.
Okay, first by Supervisor Ziegemeyer, second by Supervisor Baines. We will have a roll call vote on this, please.
Excuse me, Supervisor Boone.
Aye.
Supervisor Flores.
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer. Supervisor Baines.
Aye.
An ordinance of the County of Sutter amending the zoning of certain parcels in the county.
Okay, thank you. Question carries, we'll move on to item, well, actually, we're going to hold on to item twenty-nine, correct? Okay, so we're going to hold on to item twenty-nine, and so then we'll move to item thirty.
Receive a presentation on Sacramento Area Council of Governments twenty-two-five blueprint.
Yes, that would be great, either one, wherever you feel more comfortable. Up there, Supervisor Baines wants you there. Yeah, hi Clint.
Thank you for having me. I will be fairly brief, but I wanted to come out and talk through the regional plan that we've been working on at SACOG for, feels like forever, the last three years has been dedicated to this, this plan. So really quickly, on who SACOG is, because not everybody's familiar with us, we're, we are a, a regional government, our, kind of our bosses are the, the city and county, the elected city and county officials of the region. Our board is made up of thirty-one elected officials from twenty-two cities and six counties that you see here. We are responsible for helping make sure that federal and state transportation funding continue to flow into the region. And so what this plan is, is it's a strategy for the next thirty years of development across the region. It's built from local plans, so there's nothing in here that isn't coming from the Sutter County General Plan, the, the Sutter Point specific plan. This is kind of the, the phasing strategy for the region. How can we absorb population growth, housing, and jobs over the next twenty years through twenty-fifty? So, when we started out this plan, one of the first things we asked our board to do is to adopt kind of, what is the overarching goal or policy framework you want to be, you want this plan to be based around? And this triple bottom line framework of these co-equal goals for advancing equity, our economy, and the environment is, is kind of where we focused all of our analysis and our outreach over the last three years. And we actually took a little bit more time to do this plan. We got an extension from the state of California. This is a required plan, we have to update it every four years. We got an extension from the state of California to take a little bit more time with this plan and go out and do a lot more community outreach. And so we went out and to every single community across the region, we got to talk to over six thousand residents about what they see as special about the region and about the places that they live. And this is just a smattering of some of the, the themes that we heard, and I'll talk a little bit about some of the ones that kind of rose to the surface. And housing was, was probably the number one concern for, for public residents, and housing in the, the type of housing that you can access throughout your entire lifecycle. So while we are predominantly kind of a suburban region, that is where ninety percent of the population lives, is kind of in the suburbs, but that is not where everyone lives. And not everyone can afford to buy their house in the suburbs right away. So, the, the availability of apartments of lower-cost housing, that you can get your start on before you might move to the suburbs, and then as you're aging out of the suburbs or your kids are going off to college, the ability to not be stuck there and move to another community, a smaller home, those are all things that, that residents have valued. So this kind of wraparound availability of affordable housing throughout your lifecycle, as well as crime and public safety. And so this was feeling safe, not just when you're in your car, that the roads are safe for you to be on, but while you're waiting for transit, while you're walking, crime and safety were, were up high on concerns, as well as traffic congestion, and then just the lack of transportation choice. Not everybody in the region has access to good transit or high-quality transit, or has the ability to get out and walk or bike to what they want to, want to visit. So, we do a lot of technical analysis for this plan. One of the things that we have to do is look at how much the region is going to grow over the next twenty years. We're about a two and a half million person region today by land area, similar to Sutter County. The, the region is about seventy-five percent open space, agriculture, forest, about twenty-five percent is urbanized. We're going to grow, probably be among the fastest, if not the fastest, growing region in California for the next thirty years. We are growing faster than California currently, we're growing faster than the, the state as a, or than the nation as a whole, but that growth is starting to slow down. As the region gets a little bit older, our birth rates are slowing down, so a good chunk of the growth that we're seeing is through immigration, and not just immigration from other parts of the world or the country, but a lot of that is coming out of Southern California and out of the Bay Area, moving up into our region. This is our growth forecast, so I mentioned we're about two and a half million people today. We'll be growing to a little over three million people by twenty-fifty. To accommodate all of those people, we're adding around two hundred and sixty thousand new jobs region-wide, about two hundred and seventy-eight thousand homes, and on the right here, it says Sacramento County. That is not Sacramento, that is not Sutter County, we got the wrong thing here. In Sutter County, how do I go back? In Sutter County, apologize for the wrong slide, you're not seeing thirty-nine thousand new jobs, thirty-five thousand homes. I think it's around nine hundred new ho- or new jobs and around eleven hundred or so new homes, maybe a bit more than that. Most of those are happening in the Sutter Point area. Sorry about the, the wrong slide, we can get you, we can follow up with the actual numbers for Sutter County if that's helpful. This is all Sacramento County. On the transportation side, kind of the theme of this plan is doing more with less. We don't have enough money coming into the region to build everything that we want or to maintain the roads that we have. Region-wide, when we did the call for projects for this plan, what are the neck, what are the transportation investments that the region is looking to make over the next thirty years? We had about fourteen billion dollars worth of just road and highway expansion projects, and we can fund probably about half of that with what the region can expect to get in the term, in terms of federal and state grants, or generate locally. We also are short by around five hundred million dollars a year, region-wide, on just maintaining the system that we have. And so, this plan is really, we're not going to be able to build our way into the region that we want, we're really going to have to maintain what we have, make the best use of what we have, if we're going to remain successful. Addressing transportation challenges, so prioritizing maintenance and repair, I mentioned we're around five hundred million dollars a year short today. The ways that the plan is calling for that to be repaired or fixed is, SACOG, it does have some funding that we are able to grant out to local jurisdictions, Sutter County is, is able to apply for those funds, and we're using that funding to prioritize a lot more fixing the existing system or improvements to the existing system versus system expansion. That's one thing that we can do. We're also working with the state on looking at ways that they can stabilize state funding that comes to transportation. That means looking at the fuel tax and whether that is something that should and can, continue going forward. As electric vehicles become a bigger and bigger part of the fleet, California's fuel tax revenues are declining at the same time that costs are going up. And so there's got to be a solution that we look for there, and this plan for, calls for the state to move away from the, the fuel tax and find a way to stabilize funding so that cities and counties can continue to receive money that they need to maintain their facilities. We also need to look to, to technology. We know we can expand our freeway system in, in perpetuity, it just, we don't have the funding to do that, nor do we necessarily want to do that for all sorts of air quality and other reasons. But we can eke more efficient use and capacity out of the, the systems that we do have by looking to technology, to looking to intelligent transportation systems, better transit services, and then of course, really focusing on safety projects and things that we can bring online in the next five to ten years, rather than the next twenty to thirty years. I'm wrapping up here, but just in terms of schedule, we are asking our Land Use Committee on the SACOG Board to release this plan for public comment, starting this Thursday. So the plan and all of the, the projects that go along with it are available on our website now. We're going to host a public review period for about two months, starting July eighth, running through, or, sorry, June sixth, running through August eighth, and then we have to adopt this plan by the end of this year. We need to adopt this plan by the end of this year because this plan serves as the region's permission slip to go chase federal and state grants. Without this plan, nobody can move forward with a federal or state grant application, and a lot of our road projects wouldn't be able to move forward in general because this plan is also where the region shows that we are meeting Clean Air Act requirements for, for, for cleaning up our breathable air. As soon as we adopt this plan, I mentioned these plans have to be regularly updated, but we do care about implementation, so these plans aren't supposed to just sit on the shelf. So just a, a couple of examples of programs that SACOG has to help implement this program or this plan. The Green Means Go program is our infrastructure program. One of the things that we found really kind of delays or holds up the development in our existing communities, which is where most of the growth in this plan is happening, about two-thirds of the growth is happening kind of in those infill areas, and then there's some, about a third of it happening in new growth areas on the edges. The Green Means Go program is about bringing the, the non-transportation infrastructure, the water, the sewer, the drainage, into our infill areas that may have been developed around more commercial or industrial uses, but can't carry the same loads that you might see from a residential use. And so if we can bring the patient capital in to front-load the building of those facilities or the expansion of that infrastructure, that takes it off of the developers' books, so they're more willing to come into the infill areas to help, to help reinvest in those, in those existing communities. Mobility Zones and EEI, these are programs where we're trying to take kind of the professional planners and engineers a little bit out of the, the system and work with community to develop ideas and concepts for what they would want to see built in their, in their neighborhoods and in their homes. And this is not a one-size-fits-all. So what we brought into the, these conversations were, we have tons and tons of data that we have access to, but it's community that knows how to use that data and understands what it means to them. And so we bring the data and we allow community to kind of help, community and the local jurisdictions to help figure out, what does this mean for us and what do we want to see here? And then Ready Set Trails is another big program that we have to, it's a, it's a bit of an economic development program, but it's focused around trails and bringing a network of over eleven hundred miles of bicycle and pedestrian trails connecting every community throughout the region. And this is both for transportation, but also bringing trails into communities is absolutely, has a, a big economic development angle as well. We are one of many MPOs, Metropolitan Planning Organizations, like SACOG exists throughout the region. We partnered with our neighbors in the Bay Area, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, as well as in the Central Valley San Joaquin Council of Governments, in this mega-region working group, because our region really does act as a mega-economy. We see a lot of, of growth coming out of the Bay Area. So this group we meet regularly with, and we've developed some key projects, including bringing rail and transit all the way up through Sacramento out of San Joaquin, and eventually punching through all the way to Chico. And then I mentioned already, SACOG does have some funding, so we award program around a hundred to two hundred million dollars every two years in transportation investments around the region. We're doing state funding right now, we have a call for projects out for state transportation improvement program, that is going to pay for a lot of kind of the state of good repair, the rehabilitation, and then next year we have a federal funding program coming that is probably in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty million dollars. And that is the end of our, of my presentation. This is our SACOG, SACOG Board. I mentioned thirty-one elected officials representing every single city and county, as well as Caltrans in the region. So I will stop there with my presentation and hand it over for any questions or comments.
Awesome, thank, thank you, Clint. Thank you for the presentation, and I'll ask the board if you have any questions.
No, through the chair. I'm, I'm assuming you have Clint's email address?
Oh, yes, we have it, yeah, no problem. You can see the, the two board members up there, if you flip it, we both made it on the Kings as well, on the, to the next slide. Supervisor Baines and myself were recruited to play for the Kings, so there we are. You know, he's a little taller than I am, but other than that, we're good. But no, it's a great board to be on, and Supervisor Baines serves us well on the board. I'm, I actually just crashed the photo, but it's great that to be on there. So thank you for your service on the board for SACOG, Supervisor Baines.
Thank you.
Did you have any comments or anybody?
Yeah, sure, no, it's been a true honor to serve as Sutter County's represent, representative on the SACOG Board, and actually, I'm currently chair, chairing the Lunar Committee, so I just make a request to Neil, that, that draft plan, blueprint plan's coming out on Thursday, so make sure that if you haven't gotten in touch with Clint and the rest of the staff there, that make sure you do before that draft's finalized, because we got to make sure that, that we, it benefits Sutter County and its residents, so. But thank you for your presentation, good job.
Okay, there being no further comments, I'll just say thank you, Clint, and we'll see you actually Thursday, I think, right? All right, take care. Okay, oop, there we are. We're moving on to, then to the next item, and this will be presented by Gina Graham.
Consideration to appoint an applicant to the Sutter County Law Library Board of Trustees for a term ending the first meeting of the Board of Supervisors in January twenty-twenty-six.
Hello, Honorable Chair and Supervisors, as Ms. Ratner said, the item before you for your consideration is the appointment of an applicant to the Sutter County Law Library Board of Trustees. Our office received two applications, but there's currently only one vacancy on this board. We received an application from Daniel Cornelius Junior and Deborah McKelley. So whichever applicant you feel would best serve this board.
Okay. Was there any other comments regarding that, or that's pretty much it? We just need to make a decision? Okay, are either of the applicants here today?
No, neither is here today. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. McKelley is here.
Ms. McKelley is here, okay. Ms. McKelley, can you give us a few words of why we'd want to select you for this position?
Sure, I've worked with the Law Library Board of Trustees in a few different positions in the past couple of years, at one point as a trustee member, and then also more of in a staff position, so I'm very familiar with the processes, what we're trying to build up, and sort of the excellent collaboration we've had with the library, so greatly appreciated, and I think it's something I can continue to carry forward.
Okay, thank you for your comments, and I'll bring it back to the board, and I'd call for a motion if there's no further questions.
Move to appoint Ms. McKelley as the Sutter County's Law Library Board of Trustee.
Second.
Second, being the first meeting, never mind.
Okay, we got the idea.
Got the idea.
Okay, great, so we have a motion by Supervisor Baines to approve Ms. McKelley to the position, and then we have a second by, well, it was kind of a tie, but I think, I think Supervisor Ziegemeyer got one this one, sorry, Boone, we'll get it next time. So.
It's okay, you got to be fast to even get on a motion around here.
Yeah, so you got to be fast. So with that, we'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone.
Aye.
Supervisor Flores.
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer. Supervisor Baines.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, the ayes have it, thank you very much, Gina, and congratulations, Deborah, and I'm looking forward to working with you. I sit on that committee, so looking forward to having you there, and seeing great things for the Law Library. Okay, the next item is item thirty-two, presented by C.A.O. Smith.
Approval to appoint Ayla Elkins as the Sutter County Director of Library Services effective May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, at step five of salary range management forty-five, subject to and conditioned upon the retirement of Director James Oxner.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. It's my pleasure to recommend that the board appoint Ayla Elkins as Sutter County Director of Library Services, we'll just call it Librarian. Current Librarian, James Oxner's retiring as of this Friday, and Ms. Elkins has been with the county for about seven years. She's brought in millions of dollars in grants, she's shown great leadership in the department, she is a rare individual that has a master's degree in library sciences, so we're very fortunate that Ms. Elkins has been on, on board with the county for years and is accepting the position, and I'll, I'll turn it back to you, and Ms. Elkins is here for any comments or questions you may have.
Okay, great, before we bring it back to the board, I will ask Ms. Elkins to give us a few comments, welcome.
Are we, are we on here?
Yes, yeah.
Hi, Ayla Elkins, thanks so much for your consideration. Supervisor Ziegemeyer, last night at James's retirement reception, said, all these, all the young kids, all the young people, watch, watch James, watch what he does, and I've had the pleasure of watching him for the last seven years and working really closely with him and seeing all of the great work that he's done, and I have been so fortunate that he's mentored me and that I've gotten to learn from him, so I am a, I was born in Yuba So I am a, I was born in Yuba City at Fremont Rideout, and I'm a I'm a Marysville girl, born and raised.
All right.
I went away to school for a while and have come back and have my family here. And so it's just a pleasure to be able to serve this community. I love the library and the work that we do there. Our staff is amazing. We've got a really great team. So I'm just really fortunate for the opportunity to get to continue to serve.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Elkins. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first by Supervisor Ziegemeyer, a second by Supervisor Baines. Boone's is still looking around, wondering what happened.
I'm going to have to leave my microphone on.
And that was a quick one, but we were honored to make that motion, I'm sure. So I would call for a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. Congratulations, Ms. Elkins. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
I liked the comments last night about James's dress, because he's always, everyone talks about how sharp he dresses, he's a snappy dresser, right? So, but you seem to keep up with him fine, so we're good. Okay, so any follow-up announcements, Steve? Do you have any follow-up announcements?
No, just that we had a great employee picnic on the first and want to thank HR and the Be Well Committee for for putting that all together. And of course, the Moose Lodge, and I'd like to ask if the board would direct staff to prepare a resolution or whatever's appropriate, if we haven't already done so, to to thank them for doing all of the cooking for free for the employees. So, thank you.
And they made some great food, too. They did a great job. All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. And now we'll move on to any other comments of the board. And I think today we'll start with Supervisor Boone, since he was, you know, a little slow to the motions.
I really don't have much, but today I.
Supervisor Boone, just to interrupt you for one second, sorry. Can you also report on your trip to Washington a little bit while you're just, you don't, nothing elaborate, just give us a little bit on top of your report.
Carm and Dan and I went to Washington, D.C., and met with congressmen and senators regarding the farm bill as one of the issues, a $50 million grant to support the levies for the Sutter bypass. And the final thing was, let's see, we met with, oh, and we met with the secretary, or actually the assistant to the president, to President Trump, and talked about possibly bringing President Trump here to the area if we happen to get this grant for the rural areas. And I'd like to close this meeting tonight in in honor of Kathy or Kathleen Wilson. It was a good friend of mine, Carrie Houck's mother, who recently passed away in Live Oak. Her family is like four generations there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Baines?
I'd be added to the letter of sympathy and condolences to Kathy Wilson Jordan. Also, I'd like to let her go out to the family of Adele Heffley and to the family of Seema Sharma.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Just, sorry, if there could be a resolution prepared for the Punjabi American Heritage Society. I believe that their mid-la this year marks the 30th year. And then, this might not be the right place, but if we could look into the chickens in our district, I've had more complaints here in the last six months, or so, I guess, since the beginning of the year, than ever. And there's been homeowners that are saying that they're losing tenants because of the nuisance, and if we could just look into that matter. And just real quick, the back out to you, Neil, just that funding round with SACOG, it's very important. Thursday, they're having a luncheon, I think, to go over the next funding rounds. And it's important that we get on there because when we see the charts at every meeting and you see the amount that Sacramento County gets and what we get out here at Sutter, that it's a, it's, it's not, it's not, yeah, it's not where it should be, right? And I just think that if we don't, we continue to go there to advocate for Sutter County, but we need staff's help and assistance in getting us those funds.
And did you have any comments on cap to cap, other than what Supervisor Boone?
No, no, it was a great cap to cap. I served on a couple of different committees, Lunar Committee, Food and Ag, and then we had meetings with congressmen and senators, as was mentioned. It was overall, it was great. It was nice to be able to go there and advocate for our county. And but the fun part is the follow-up and when you see the funds actually come back to the community. But overall, great, great. It was very well attended and it was hard work, but it was good. I was very proud to represent Sutter County.
Thank you, Supervisor Baines, and Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
First of all, I want to thank you guys for going to D.C. and lobbying for us here at Sutter County. Every year I've wanted to go, but something's always come up. And so next year, I keep on saying that, but thank you, guys, because, you know, it takes a lot out of their schedule to go over there, and they're pounding the pavement literally all day long in the early evening, but thank you, guys. I'd like to be added to Seema Sharma's, please. And then I'd like to close the memory, Mike Gillespie, who passed away also recently. I want to thank the, all the committees that helped out Be Well, the grounds, the Moose Lodge for the, our employee picnic. It was the best turnout I've ever seen, and I've only been part of it for the last six years. It's fun. It's awesome to see everyone show up, like, almost everyone show up. We'd love to see everyone, but just, it was a nice day. It wasn't too hot, wasn't windy. The food was amazing, and it was just a great turnout. So very exciting. I got my cup, I'm excited. I like it. So thank you for all that put that on. That was really a lot of fun. We're ending the season right now. It's playoff baseball for our local high schools. Sutter High School just lost last week to Del Campo, second round of the playoffs, but we're rooting for Yuba City. Live Oak's still, I'm sorry, East Nick is still in the playoffs, I believe. But let's, you know, keep on rooting these teams on, guys, and hopefully they they do well. And I'd like to get some plaques for the league championships that represent the county that are coming through here. So, you know, we have great schools, you know, from Live Oak, East Nick, Sutter High School. We also have Yuba City River Valley. They're in the city, but they're still in the county, so we got to root them on. And child volleyball just ended last week, so congratulations to those ladies. They ended up on a high note, finished the season strong. So it's great. I'm looking forward to going to watch baseball in Marysville. I love baseball, so that's going to be fun to go watch. Hope you guys all have a fun and safe weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Baines, you had said.
Yes, just, again, in addition to the meetings that were, that were all organized at cap to cap, that part of it is just networking with the other folks in our region that that we cross paths with and the social kind of environment, but connecting with an individual that has literally stepped out to say, I'm going to help you guys write your safer grant. I mean, and I mean, now it's, again, it goes back to us and our follow-up, but for an individual, I mean, to hear me talking to somebody else just in a conversation, say, can you elaborate on, what'd you say? You guys, you weren't successful in the last, you know, two or three times that you guys applied for this?
Yeah.
I'll tell you how I can help, and we'll help you guys write it and walk you through it, so.
And staff has already followed up on that.
I was going to say, but those are, those are just some of the things that that came out of, you know, that week, so.
Yep. Thank you, Supervisor Baines. Okay, I have a few comments. So first, I'd like to request a gold resolution for Donna Johnson in recognition of 35 years of service to the county. I also request a gold resolution for Major Murphy and the Salvation Army for their work as county coordinators in partnership with Sutter County. A couple of announcements, International Museum Day is May 18, 2025, and this year's theme is the future of museums in rapidly changing communities. So I want to join, we want everyone to join us in recognizing the importance of museums and how museums are shaping more inclusive and innovative and sustainable future. I'd also like to add my name to the memories, closing the memories of especially, in this case, to Carrie Houck's mom, who was a wonderful lady. She made, I just remember the fudge she made, incredible fudge, but she's a wonderful lady and she'll be missed. And then also, a dear friend of mine is Mr. Adele Heffley, who did hours of volunteer service for the community as a Kowanian. He was just a tremendous man, and sorry that he lost his life. I want to mention that May 31 is the Summer Stroll for Yuba City, so the heart of Sutter County on Plumas Street. I'd like to invite everybody to come down to the Summer Stroll. We expect a really good turnout this year. It's exciting. And as you've heard all night, the first game of the Yuba-Sutter High Wheelers is taking place May 20 at 7:05 p.m. I'd like to ask that the board show up at 6 o'clock for a special presentation that the team would like to conduct for you guys. So I'd love to have you guys show up for the meet and greet, employees as well, if you if you'd like to join us. You're more than welcome to. And then I also want to ask that a resolution be made for Jennifer Jordan, who's done over 15,000 hours of community service just for Sutter County alone, and I'll provide the details to the clerk, but I'd like to ask for that resolution. And then just to add to the Washington, D.C. visit, it was an amazing few days. I'm exhausted. I don't know about you guys, but that pretty much wore me out. But we got to visit, as they, both the supervisors here mentioned, senators and congressmen. And we can talk about the visits and all of that. And as Supervisor Baines mentioned, the importance of networking, and it's kind of strange, because I've been to cap to cap, and there's 450 people that go from this region to that region, but for some reason, we don't have the discussions here that you would think we would have here that we have there. So as Supervisor Baines mentioned, too, the the follow-up is really key. There was one meeting in particular that I just want to bring up, and that was Supervisor Boone touched on it lightly, but it was an assistant to President Trump, Christine is her name, and she was an incredible person, made me feel really good about what's going on in the government, because there's, you know, a lot of confusion with the tariffs, all the, all the issues going on with immigration and things like that. And just having this discussion with her was comforting, at least from my perspective, and really gave us some insight on how, she said, the guy in the other room thinks, because he was in the other room, and we were sitting in this room, but talked about how we have to start thinking more competitively and more like a business in our approach to grants and things that we go after. So, you know, we are all business people, and so we could relate to that. And I just felt really good about that conversation. She also mentioned that she would be available to us and since then has emailed all of us at least twice. And so, you know, we'll see if she holds holds to her word, and we're going to also hold them accountable, because we went after some funding that kind of vanished from our scene here. It was $50 million for flood protection through the BRIC program. And she provided us, though, with some alternatives to go ahead and apply, be able to apply for the funding. So we're going to follow up with that, and we'll see what kind of progress we can get, and we'll see how that works. But just, I just wanted to mention that because it worked out really well. Okay, with that, any other comments? And I'll ask for a motion.
To the, to the chair?
Yes.
One last thing. I forgot, we have at 6 p.m. tonight, the.
Oh, right. That's a big deal.
High school speech contest.
Yeah. So tonight's a special speech contest. Did you want to, want to give the details of it tonight? That'd be great.
Yeah, sure. At 6 p.m. tonight, this is something Chairman Flores wanted to start back up. We had done it for several years. Any high school student in Sutter County is eligible. The funding for their small scholarships for the first through fifth place, I think, and our emergency manager, Zach Hamel, took that on. Our PIO used to run that, and Zach and LeAnn Hennessy stepped up and went to bat for that. And we'll see how many kids we get. We don't know, but we'll try to build that back up each year like we did before, because we, we went from a few participants to many, and then it may have been around COVID.
COVID, yeah.
Stopped, so, you know, it's at 6 p.m. right here.
Oh, great. And then I'll just add the, it's the Community Foundation is providing the, the Yuba-Sutter, or is it Sutter-Yuba, Community Foundation's providing the funding for the scholarships tonight. So and whoever wins, again, as C.S. Smith mentioned, it's $1,500 worth of rewards or scholarship funding, so. And Zach, thank you for your work on it. Yes.
My apologies. Also, we have closed sessions, don't forget, so.
Oh, yeah. Everybody needs to stick around. Okay. All right, long meeting. Appreciate everybody.
Motion.
In a motion, is there a second?
Request.
Oh, come on, Boone, this is your chance.
I'll second.
All right. We have a second by Supervisor Boone. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Wonderful meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Excuse me, Chair, we do have.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.
For 70 years, we have flown at 70,000 feet. Beal Air Force Base invites you to the Beal Air and Space Expo, celebrating a legacy of reconnaissance. Witness an astonishing lineup of aerial performances on June 7 and 8.
You've seen signs marking some of the gems in Marysville. They're produced by Sapphire Sign Company, providing something small, large, and mobile. With decades of experience, Sapphire Signs has pioneered local production of a variety of signs, like temporary campaign-style signs, welcomes for unique events, building signage, event promotion, and vehicle customization. Need a sign? Make it a gem from Sapphire Sign Company, on the web at sapphirmarketinggroup.net. Sapphire.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba-Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba-Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba-Sutter and Nevada Counties.